Good evening. The time is now six P M. It is Monday, September the twenty fifth, and I will call this meeting in the Lewis County Board of Education to order. First item, we will have the pledge of allegiance, and I will ask Dr. Stewart to please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda adjustments this evening?
There are none, Madam President.
All right. Next, we'll have personnel achievement, recognition, and student achievement, community involvement. If you'd like to tell us about these folks.
Absolutely. I'd like to start with Mr. Balot and Ms. Metzger from Jane Louu Elementary. So if you all would come up, please. These two folks were doing morning bus and drop-off duty at Jane Louu Elementary. They have this down to a science, and I'm pretty sure that they read one another's minds. We had a little one get dropped off in the middle of the parking lot and took off across the parking lot through the traffic, and these two were running to the middle of the parking lot to assist with that. So it was nice for them to be alert and paying attention and helping our students.
I'd also like to say something. I was there, and I've been a bus driver. Everything come-- the bus driver's done a good job. Both of these two people right here done a fine job. Everything went smooth. The kids, they know exactly what was going on. I seen the whole thing with my whole myself. Everything run good, and the safety of the kids wasn't at the top of the list. So I want to thank you both for a job well done.
Thank you, sir.
We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe today's a happy birthday, right, Millie?
Well, thank you.
And then we would also like to recognize Ms. Michelle Benson from Robert L. Bland Middle School. Come on up, Mrs. Benson. Mrs. Benson, I mentioned to you all the board meeting or two ago that she has recently joined the Civil Air Patrol and participated in the top flight. So she got to fly her airplane over top of the middle school while the students were outside on the field. And most of you won't know this, and she's going to be mad at me for saying this, but Saturday, on her day off, with nobody from school knowing, she participated in the Girls in Aviation in Clerksburg and encouraged her students to go as well. And so she had one of her students who also went. Two of her students went.
It was really nice.
I'd also like to say to Mrs. Benson, I was over there when all this was going on with air conditioners. I went to every classroom in there. The students was well behaved. That was her student was, the whole floor. I went in about every room up there. And they was working under heat conditions, and I want to thank you and all the other teachers up there.
You're welcome. Thank you for visiting.
But it was very nice. And your students seemed very interested in what they was doing. They was very-- I was very impressed.
Well, thank you. That means a lot.
Brotherly doing a fine job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. No student discipline this evening?
No, ma'am.
Academics report?
No. Mr. Tid is going to share some academics in a little bit.
Okay. And we had no delegation signed up? Next, approve the minutes from the following board meeting: August twenty second, a special meeting; November the fifth, a special meeting-- I'm sorry, September the fifth, a special meeting; September the eleventh, a regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, run them meetings again.
August the twenty second was a special meeting; September the fifth was a special meeting?
Hang on, Jesse. You're trotting a little too fast there, Phyllis.
Okay.
Okay. August twenty second.
Yeah. Um, September the fifth.
September the fifth.
And then September the eleventh.
September the eleventh.
And they were-- are all in our packet pages four through sixteen.
I don't have a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Kenny has moved. Dave is second. Is any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, consent agenda: use of buildings and grounds. We have Nate Stansberry, the City of Weston, the trunk-or-treat event at Robert L. Bland Middle School parking lot and athletic complex, October the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, nine a.m. to ten P M. Second, Marissa Fox, Girl Scouts at Black Diamond Troop, one oh five five six, use of Roanoke Elementary School cafeteria, classroom for Girl Scout meeting, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, through May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, four thirty P M. to six thirty P M. Day of the week not decided yet, but we'll verify it with principal. Next, Desiree Dedamore, Lewis County Mount near youth, use of Robert L. Bland Middle School wrestling building for cheer competition practices, September one, twenty twenty-three, through November tenth, twenty twenty-three, five P M. to eight P M. Fourth, Jeremy Bruffy, Lewis G. League, use of Lewis County High School gym for basketball practice and skills, October second through the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, Mondays and Wednesdays, six P M. to seven thirty P M. We'll work around other school activities. Those requests are all page seventeen through twenty in our packet. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Mike is moved. Adam is second. Is any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have approved payroll and payment of bills in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Kenny has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, Mrs. Mace, we have the personnel agenda.
While the superintendent's recommendations, please accept the following resignations and retirements. One, A. Rosanna Bush, resignation as wellness coordinator for Lewis County High School, effective September eighth, twenty twenty-three. B. Michaela Bean, resignation substitute teacher, Lewis County Schools, effective September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. C. Rebecca Stansberry, resignation as the five oh four coordinator for Lewis County Schools, effective September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. D. Jessica Smart, resignation, special education teacher, Robert Bland Middle School, effective October sixth, twenty twenty-three, pending a certified replacement.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion. Second.
Kenny has moved. Adam is second. Is any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
Two, please consider approval of following requests. A. Laura James, approved revised hire date from September fourteen, twenty twenty-three-- excuse me, to September fourteen, twenty twenty-three, from September eleven, twenty twenty-three's meeting. B. Angie Holden, approved as non-paid host for cross-country at Robert Bland Middle School, effective for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Make a motion. Go approve.
Can we take two B's separate? And I'd like to abstain from it. I'm related to her.
All right. We are voting on-- I've asked for a motion on A. A. Is that acceptable?
That's fine.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Kenny has seconded. Is any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Now, I'm asking for a motion to approve two B.
Make the motion.
Adam is moved. Is there a second?
There you go.
Second by Kenny. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And abstention. Motion carries four zero with Mike Holden abstaining.
Three, please employ following professional personnel. B. Josephus Villanueva, parent elementary music teacher for Lewis County Schools, effective, excuse me, September twenty-five, September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, pending background check and release for Rix County Schools. P. Travis Jewell, grade five teacher, Jane Louu Elementary School, effective September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, pending certification.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion. Second.
Mike has proved Adam-- Mike has moved. Adam is second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
Four, please employ the following service personnel. B. Melissa Almond, Kevin Flugardi, Tiffany Foley, Suzanne Landaker, S. Danny, substitute agent, Lewis County Schools, effective September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, pending background checks. Tina Flye Gross, effective September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. G. Sharon Bennett, itinerant classroom, special education instructional aide slash autism mentor for Leedy Creek Elementary School, effective September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. And H. Shannon St. Cool West, bus operator, special needs around Lewis County Schools, effective September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion.
Mike has moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kenny. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
Five, please employ following professional extracurricular personnel. A. Bethany Brooks of Kirchberg is a remedial specialist for Saint Patrick's School, effective for the twenty-two and twenty-four school year, pending background check.
Make a motion. Second.
Kenny has moved. Dave is second. Is any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
Six, please employ the following service extracurricular personnel. B. James R. Stutler, junior, bus operator for shuttle run, Lewis County Schools, effective September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion. Second.
Mike has moved to approve. Adam is second. Is any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
We're seeking bottom to approve the following parent or community volunteers. Jane Louu Elementary School, Franzen Mathis, Courtney Mathis, Gregory Zelinski, Tori Zelinski, Leedy Creek Elementary School, Brittany Booker, Conda Smith, Lewis County High School, Alva Allen, Melanie Allen, Tammy Shreve, Heather Smith, David Taylor, Christina Wiedner, Gregory Zelinski, Tori Zelinski, Peterson Central Elementary School, Tracy Altun, Randy Abington, Jeffrey Krieger, Heather Flugardi, Christina Wiedner, Runham Elementary School, Brittany McIsaac, Mary Radford, Tiffany Rawl, Samantha Reiter, Amy Short, Robert Bland Middle School, Tracy Altun, Heather Flugardi, Amy Short, Transportation, Joe Altter.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mike has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have facilities and construction update.
So I want to start by telling you, we did apply for M I P three. We have-- we have to traverse that to the school board-- or to the school board, to the school building authority, I'm sorry.
They have a copy of the letter.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that had been transferred back in. So I didn't mention that the last piece that we had just finished.
Yes.
Glad you got that. The Mantrap project, the grant was finally awarded from the S D A after our changes had been made. It was acceptable to them. So it has been awarded out. We have a pre-construction meeting next week. So hopefully we have a date of start next week. We had a Zoom call last week just to let them know that that award had been given by the S D A. And for the H B A C project at the middle school, it's still going very slowly, some very beginning stages. I was there today, and they're actually running some of the electric lines within the building, the new lines for the new system. And the old boilers are totally gone, and the new boilers are to be on site next week.
Do we have a completion date for that yet?
Obviously, twenty-four.
How about the mantraps?
No, we have our-- we have our pre-construction meetings where I only have a start date for that yet.
Okay.
Did we get in some of the parts for the units that weren't working?
We have parts in. We also found a technician who did at least a telecall with Tony M.D. to get the middle school up and running last week when it decided to shut down. Was that Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Also found out it was down, and we got back in the building.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to reports and discussion.
There is a use of buildings and grounds report for you that is twenty-one and twenty-two of your packet. Okay. And then Mr. Tid is here to do the test score update for the board. This is from the state testing that was completed in the spring. Those test results have been unembargoed, and reports have been sent to families. So I ask Mr. Tid to share some of that information with you.
I think each of you guys remember from going this last year. I think I did it last year at the high school. I think that's what we were at the high school last year for this presentation. But it's the yearly report that we do just to make sure that everyone's aware of the test scores, the results from the previous year, and I kind of do comparisons between the previous year and the year before. So it's looking at Lewis County from twenty-one, twenty-two to Lewis County twenty-two, twenty-three. Just want to go to that. I think we'll turn that first light off so you can see a lot of numbers here, guys. A lot of data. Okay. Last year, our results. This looks like a lot of numbers, but let me just do some explanations real quick here. This is our twenty-one, twenty-two data compared to our twenty-two, twenty-three data in our difference column over here on the right. Okay? So from E L A third grade, the twenty-three year, school year last year, we did have a three-point drop from the previous. So this is our difference column. Math third grade, we made pretty substantial gain of eight points from the previous year. Again, we're at the E L A fourth grade, one point drop. But in math, once again, a big upgrade to nine points. Math one upgrade from the previous. Just going down here, fifth grade with a one-point increase, E L A. Fifth grade math, seven-point drop. Fifth grade science, a one-point drop. Sixth grade, E L A, nine-point gain. Math, sixth, it was just an equal out. There was no difference. E L A, seventh, that was our largest drop, E L A seventh grade. And we're looking at some things to identify as to how we help that. Same thing with E L A for math, seventh grade, and six-point drop from year to year. And then, as you see, eighth grade, we're all green. So we had a seven-point gain in E L A, which is a big gain there. Four-point gain in math, and a two-point gain in science from year to year. And now just to dig into numbers more, this is like the high-level overview. This is the comparison, just kind of looking at it in graph form of twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. And you can see our highest gains in the third grade math, the fourth grade math, the sixth grade E L A, and the eighth grade E L A. This is us compared to the state. So this is last year's state results for the G S A, which is grades three through eight, and our county results, three through eight, E L A and math, and with science in fifth grade and eighth grade. You can see that the state is still above us in every category except math. Eighth grade, we're equalling with the state. But we are making gains towards that progress that we want to see. So this is kind of getting deeper, the numbers here. This is third grade E L A. You can see I have the arrow down at the top. It's a three percent-- or three-point drop. And then we have a state versus district. So our state number here was-- the state was seven points greater in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then in twenty-two, twenty-three, the state rose a little bit, and we dropped a little bit. So that made us thirteen points less than what the state was. So that's kind of the point that we're looking at. Each of these slides, this is slides three through one. So state, state, and then the number at the top. So there's three hundred points that we'll get from each slide. Same thing with math here. We have fourteen points less than the state in twenty-one, twenty-two. And in twenty-two, twenty-three, we have a gain, only nine points less than the state, but we did have an eight-point increase in math third grade. And we can contribute this to, which we'll get to in the end here, but we can contribute a lot of these gains to effective teaching strategies, to different programs that we brought in, professional developments that we've offered. And we continue doing that to continue seeing these gains, like we are in third grade math and fourth grade math in all of our other subjects. Again, one-point drop there in fourth grade E L A, and then fourth grade math was that nine-point game. Fifth grade E L A, one-one game. Again, you can see at the bottom there in-- I should have to hand you that from the beginning, but here, guys, this is the slides as we went through. Fifth grade math, that was the seven-point drop there. And this one, it hurts a little bit because we are eighteen points behind the state on this one. We really got to do something about that in grade math to increase those scores. Fifth grade science, we're five points behind the state this year from our last year's scores. Sixth grade E L A, this is where that big game, that nine-point game in sixth grade E L A. You can see here we're five points less than the state. So we're gaining on them. We just need to get there. We have strategies in place that we're going to implement to get there. Sixth grade math, that's where we were, you know, equaled out from year to year, but we're still not where we need to be. We're still eleven points less than what the state was. Seventh grade E L A, eleven points drop and eighteen points less than the state. Fourth grade math, same score here, plus six-point drop and twelve points less than the state. Eighth grade, E L A, there's that increase of seven points. And then you can see here we're gaining on the state by four points. If you look at the bottom one, bottom data, we had seventeen points less than, thirteen points less than, but we're gaining on by four points on the state there. So we're growing. We're getting better at that content area. Eighth grade math, this is the area where we are equal to the state, which is that red spot for us. And we've added a four-point gain, which allows us to get to that equal spot with the state. Eighth grade science, two-point gain, and we're only four points behind the state on this one. Not saying that the state-- the state is the average. We're trying to get above that. We're not-- we don't want to just be good. We want to be great. We want to be a county in the state that people can look to, right? So the S A T scores, so that was the three through eighth grade. So in West Virginia, federally, we're mandated to test in grades three through eight and eleven. And that is what we test. So eleventh grade scores, you can see here, we have S A T, what the prescribed test is for eleventh grade. And in the S A T, it is a math content area and a evidence-based reading and writing content area, T R W. And you can see the scores there. The twenty-one, twenty-two school year, this middle block here, this was a school year where it was kind of an anomaly year. We had a lot of really bright kids that year. It was a good thing. That was last year. I was able to come to report to you guys and say, look at all our, you know, look at our scores. We're thirty points above. We're thirty-point game, and it was really great to see. But this past year, we had that drop again, more than of what we had in the twenty twenty-one school year. You can see here in the pink column, or the pink row rather, that is in the gray row. And you can see here again, we're a bit behind the state. And this is where we're working. We need to get-- we got to improve. So we had some positive results here, but we have some negative things that we are working to improve. And you can see here, the things that we're doing to improve. So our-- this is for E L A strategies. We did adopt new textbooks in F Y twenty, and that textbook adoption has allowed our teachers to continue learning that textbook and hopefully continue developing from that. We are still partnering with Ashlock. It's that consulting reading program that saw some gains. We're continuing to see gains, but that's not going to happen overnight. Those are things that have to happen over time. So that's a growth in progress on that one. We're still partnering with local consultants. We still have county curriculum specialists in every elementary school, one at the middle school. We're still offering professional elements on this. And actually, at the eleventh grade level, we're trying to prepare for that eleventh grade S A T by offering the P S A T eight-nine and the P S A T ten, just to kind of get the kids familiar with that standardized testing at the high school level. That's something the high schools have decided to take on. And it's going to be an overall benefit for our students because we're going to use that data to drive instruction and use that data to make informed decisions as to how we're going to make those gains. We're after-- offering after-school tutoring. We're still doing that ready. This year, one of our goals is to develop a county curriculum map. So by the end of the year, we'll have that ready, and we'll have that-- So by the end of the year, we'll have that ready and we'll have that moving into those content areas so that everyone will be on the same page. We're also doing a science of reading implementation. It's a West Virginia Department of Education initiative. It's more of like a national initiative, to be honest. It's called the Science of Reading, they're kind of rebranding reading, and they're putting some different terminology behind it, but we're going to be obviously implementing that as well. And I think one of the strongest things we'll be doing this year is, is classroom walkthrough and having the expectation that the classroom walkthroughs via the product that we're purchasing called Ewok is going to be offering. So it's, it's another tool in the toolbox to hold accountability and to make sure that we're all doing what we can be doing. Same thing for math strategies, pretty much. We're doing instead of the Ashlock program, we're doing the Mathia program at the middle and high school level. We're still partnering with them, we're still going to have local consultant for them. We're still doing the kind of curriculum specials, like I said, at the middle and the high, middle and elementary levels. And at the middle and high school, they did, like they did last year, they adjusted the schedule to allow more time in those, those core content areas, the math and ELA classes. Again, we're still offering professional elements, PSAT eight-nine and ten, after-school tutoring, I-ready. Textbook adoption, that's, that's the big one for this year. Math is on the, on the block to be adopted this year. So that will be, that will be happening by the end of the year, we'll know which textbook we're getting for math, and that does change the curriculum a lot, and we're forward with that.
They're also, the state's also redoing the math standards.
Yes.
So those will be adjusted and changed for the end of the school year as well.
And then, regarding curriculum math, we're going to, again, try to get that set up by the end of the year to have a, everyone on the same page goal here. And the same thing with classroom walkthroughs for, for the math class as well as the ELA classes and really for all the classes. That's the high-level overview of this data, guys. There are bright spots in the data, I know it looks like a lot of down arrows, but there are some positive bright spots in here that we can, we can discuss, and then some things that we're going to, to grab for those, those spots that are a little left. Any questions, your names?
What are they doing to, to bring these up?
Thanks, and we're trying, and we can just kind of refer back to these slides here. We're doing professional learning, we are adopting programs that is, that are trying to help these test scores. We are working with community in, in different capacity with our CIOs to try and make sure that the whole food's being taught. You know, they're being, you know, foundationally, they have, you know, their needs met, so they can come into school and learn. So those are things that are happening, as well as after-school tutoring and, you know, the programs that we have in place. Yeah, it's a, it's, it's a long process to get these things moving.
We're also looking at ways to support folks that we have in classrooms that are not certified, that haven't gone through pedagogy and so forth to, to learn how to teach. So we're trying to get some support in place for those, those folks as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Next, we have consider and approve moving the Jane Lou alumni monument to the gravel area by the flagpole at Jane Lou Elementary School. And we have something in our folder about that as well. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mike has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kenny, any discussion?
I went and met with the alumni as requested by the board. We had a really nice conversation. They were in agreement to move it to the area by the flagpole. One, for easy access from the parking lot. Two, because we have cameras and can help protect against vandalism somewhat. And then, three, with the picnic tables in that area, it gives folks a, a place to go and their words to spend some time meditating.
Alumni, I like the idea also that, you know, and not because I'm handicapped, but, you know, if older people comes, you know, they've, they've got a nice level place. And if it rains, they're right there underneath the pavilion. You know, they're just more plus than there was, you know, putting it down the road versus vandalism. It's just a real nice place for it, it just seemed like it was kind of made for it, really, with, I mean, the biggest thing, we'll be getting it moved from the top of the hill down to the bottom. And I talked to Sam Hicks, and we come up with an idea that hopefully we'll get it moved down there all in one piece, so.
The school is looking forward to having the opportunity to use it as an educational piece as well so that they can educate the current students about the high school that used to stand there.
We've got a good alumni down there today. They're, they're good people, they seem like they want to help the school, and we do appreciate the alumni.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have consider and approve the revised memorandum of understanding between Central West Virginia Community Action Incorporated Head Start and the Lewis County Board of Education for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Kenny's moved, Dave has seconded, any discussion?
You had already approved this memorandum earlier. There's been a revision to it for Head Start to be able to meet some of their guidelines. They needed a couple of things added, so we went ahead and added that for them.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have consider and approve Freddie Potter and his alumni class to place a donation box at the Lewis County High School sporting events to raise money to purchase new transport vehicles, golf carts. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mike has moved, is there a second? Second by Adam. I'll start the discussion. I am assuming that he will be, this group will be following the school requirements for handling money?
Mrs. Spencer and I have both spoken with Mr. Potter about those requirements. The last conversation that I had with him was, I believe he was planning to run the money through Lewis County First, that organization, so that the money would not have to go through us and meet our requirements.
I, how can that be if we are approving collecting the money?
Well, the way I understand it, that they'll funnel the money through Lewis County First, and then it will be, they'll make a donation to the school, so.
Well, I'm just concerned that we meet all the requirements that we need to meet for having money that, that we've approved to be collected, that's... Mrs. Spencer, do you have anything to add?
In talking with Mr. Potter, I think what he's wanting is for you to approve them to have a box at the school.
School, yes.
Not, they're raising the funds, and how they do it. My understanding from him is that Lewis County First is going to raise funds and do everything, and then they're going to donate golf carts to the school later on. But what they're asking you to do is approve them to put up a collection box.
Is, is to approve them to solicit for money?
Right. Not for the purpose or not to prove the purpose, which is the location of the box, is what I understood.
Just want to provide, as a question you may or may not know, oversight of that box, what would happen if that box were missing and that currency's gone?
I had a lot of concerns with this because I really haven't dealt with it many. And I would assume that if Lewis County First was putting the boxes there, that they are responsible for it, but I really haven't gotten any solace there.
I guess I'd just feel better about this if this was run through legal or the auditor or someone so we don't end up, you know, what if somebody says, hey, I put ten thousand dollars in there last night and it's not there? Then what happens?
In some ways, it's, is much different than, like when the boosters are selling hot dogs and hamburgers. We're, we're not there collecting the money off of them every day. And they're supposed to file a report at the end of the year, but...
Boosters are insured, and they run all of their financial reports through the school every year. So with us being outside organizations, they don't provide us the numbers. And with, with this organization, they have to make that contact every day, and make all the laws, rules.
I personally appreciate their willingness, Lewis County First, as well as
I think it's a good thing, yeah.
Mr. Potter doing this. I, I do have to agree with Phyllis. I think that we assume perhaps maybe a slight little bit of liability if, if there were some
If we had a miracle, yeah.
missing.
I was told that someone would be there by the box.
If that's the case, I don't see an issue with it.
I believe Mr. Potter, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he made the box and everything, so there wouldn't have no expense in it. I don't, I'm assuming he's already got the box ready to go, the way I understood it.
If it's being pleased by them,
I mean, I...
there's a waiver that we could sign?
Yeah, I don't, you know, heaven knows, we need everybody we can to help us raise money and to provide services. I just don't want us to get into some kind of a mess and then go, oh, we should have done this.
We assume no responsibility for the box. That's their box, we just allow them to place it on our property.
So you can amend the motion? Yeah. Will you amend the motion, Mike? So...
And they'll, they'll maybe sign a waiver holding us harmless, I would presume?
I can, I can have a waiver put in place for that.
I make a motion that if they sign a waiver or whatever, then we'll go ahead and allow them to do this.
I second it.
Okay, all right, any other discussion?
And I want to thank them for doing that, but that's quite an undertaking. I mean, you thought, you buy two of them, that's going to be...
Sure, yes.
Sure.
And we certainly appreciate them doing that, or I do, I don't know how the rest of you feel about it.
All in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have consider and approve pro officer for deputies in the middle and high school. Fifteen thousand dollars in elementary school, seventeen thousand for a total of thirty-two thousand. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Kenny's moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have Dr. Stewart's update.
I have two. The first one is hope guess. I spoke with Mr. Nichols last week, I believe. Mr. O'Brien is still seeking out other investors to help raise the money, to help with the floor at the high school in the gym. In doing so, he has worked with some large entities who are very interested in helping. At this time, he does not want to disclose who they are until they are ready to make an announcement. So he is working with them, that, that work has not stopped. He's continuing to do that, and wanted to share that with the board at this time. The second update I have is that we had the regional golf tournament today at Stonewall, and one of our golfers has qualified to move on to the state golf tournament.
Good.
Good.
You have a name?
I do not have a name.
Quick.
All right.
Great.
Board comments, Kenny?
I don't have anything.
Dave?
Yes, a few weeks ago, Dr. Stewart, Rhonda Judy, and I met with our counterparts from Gilmore County for our quarterly meeting. And it was held at Leading Creek Elementary. And it's, I think it's the first time since COVID that all of us could be there physically at, at Leading Creek Elementary. And it was a nice meeting, school looks great. Everyone was doing great things in the classroom. It's a, it's a gem out there, so. If I, if I was starting teaching again, I'd say, I want to go to Leading Creek.
Okay. Mike?
The traffic out of Peterson, what do we, what we come up with out there?
So I'm working to get a meeting scheduled with all the folks involved, including some police and DOH. The biggest issue that we have at this point is that the traffic is accumulating on the main road, and we have no power over the main road. Our power stops at the end of our property. So for us to go out and force traffic to move, we don't have the power to do that. So we need the help of some other entities to, to help us in that process. So I'm working on getting that meeting set up.
Are, are they still working the gate out there, do you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So they are gate and everything like it was last year, okay. All right, the driver's egg card, wasn't, I know you said something about, or something else about it.
So, yeah, I've been working with some of our local auto dealers to see what kind of deals we can get in place to, to help them out.
Okay, now I got a question. Jerry, this concerned you with the, with the drivers. I know before, and I know we've changed it back, I know there've been some students missing, signing up up there, and then, of course, the drivers haven't got notified, you know, because nobody signed up, and then the kids show up up there, so. I'd like to run this again here. I know before, and, and in the levy, it's two hours that the drivers get if they make the run or whatever. So if we could give them maybe an hour to go up there and just do away with this thing here and get everything back, we would still be saving an hour off the two hours. And as long as we can do this and do it legally, then I'd like to see that done. And also, if we get any, if we can hire any other janitors, I don't know. I know they said there's only two, if you could look into that. And that's, I would like to thank, like I said, I did go over at Robert L. Bland during all this heat thing, and, and there was a lot of the teachers. And the ones that recognized here tonight, there is going to be some others recognized. You know, because they, they're doing, they've done a real good job under real bad conditions. Cooks, I mean, the teachers, janitors, they all kind of work together and under very, very hot conditions, because I was there myself, seeing it myself, so. They're not going to be the only ones recognized. I mean, we just started, just happened to start with the... But Mrs. Benson's class, like I said, once again, I, I was very impressed, I went in there. The students was well behaved, everything was just, you know, on the whole floor from, from the library cleared to where the new air condition start. Kids was very good, and I think they need to be commended, the whole, the whole staff. And down at Jane Lou, when I was down there, you know, there was, like I said, that was a real good job of getting the buses in, the drivers done a good job, the kid, everything just worked real smooth down there, so. And, and, and the two we just sat here this evening and recognized was doing an excellent job. So, you know, there is some good things going on, and some people need to get recognized that, that have been doing a good job all along, so. I, I just want to thank them for their efforts and, and to keep up the good work, and that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any comments this evening. Our next meeting is October the ninth at, it's, I'm sorry, Mr. Gessi has signaled that he didn't have any.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. Our next meeting is October the ninth at 6:00 PM here at the administration building. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Kenny has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries, the time is...